Comments in the public at this time? Anybody wish to address the board? I do some. And if there are no comments, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Uh, bids result. Dead result. Teenage Restoration Project bids. Go through it.
Okay, the bids, uh, the bids were opened on August 8th, uh, here at Halsted Hall. The mechanical, those four different bids that were open, the first one was the mechanical bid. Uh, the bidder K and L Plumbing and Heating, total amount was ninety-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, Brockway Mechanical Systems Incorporated, eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty. LH Le Plant Company Incorporated, ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred. Those are all out of Plattsburgh. Uh, the next item was the electrical bid. That was from Mountain Lake Electrical Incorporated, ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty. Bill Jabo Electrico, eighty thousand, nine hundred. They're both out of Plattsburgh. Harold R. Plume Incorporated from Boston Spa was a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred. The next bid was for the plumbing. That was from LH Le Plant Company Incorporated, twenty-five thousand, six hundred. Brockway Mechanical was twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty. And the last one was the civil bid. And that was a Nigley and Chase out of South Burlington, Vermont, nine hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and thirty. Plus, there were other bid items that were listed. I don't have them with me, but the total of them was fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen. Um, Conroy and Conroy Contractors, their total bid was nine hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. And the additional bid items were forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-six. Um, Renee Building Contractors was eight hundred and thirteen thousand, thirty-four dollars. And the bid items were thirty-six thousand, two seventy-two. And those are the only bids that we received. As far as I can know, that they're still being reviewed by the engineering firm. I haven't heard any difference.
That's the previous meeting. All have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes and through this meeting of August 1st.
Section.
Moved by trustee Jefferson. Second by trustee Tancill. Any discussion? And being no discussion, all is a favorable vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, bills. You all have the copies of the bills? Are said, do we have any additions or deletions?
We have five additions tonight.
Wow.
And that's because the meeting is a little bit earlier than I remember. Um, the first one is Staples, three seventy-nine thirty. It's, uh, office supplies for various departments. Business card, an amount of two seventy-six twenty-two. That is, um, fully tables and chairs for the library. Simply prescription, prescription coverage, one thousand, three ninety oh nine. Exelis, uh, thirty-six thousand, nine dollars and seventy-seven cents, monthly bill. And NIPA, monthly bill, seventy-two thousand, two ninety-five.
I make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight?
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Second by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all is a favorable vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. For Spinnets.
I have none.
To report to the board, uh, the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on my agenda is I need a motion to authorize the clerk to go to the NICA poll training on the September nineteenth to the twenty-third.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Second by trustee Robertson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all is a favorable vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Uh, second thing is I need a motion to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for local law four. That's exemption of real property taxes for real property owned by veterans who are who are in military service in the United States during the Cold War.
I'll make that motion to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice.
I'll second. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Second by trustee Baker. Any discussion?
I just have a question, George. Is there, will they be putting in a number of years? I mean, is this something the village will judge or people will apply based on their service?
Yeah, if you're in a certain period of time, you're going to be allowed. I, that will have a, a percentage of a reduction of your assessment.
Right, and I see that. It's just a Cold War in, in quotes. And I just wondered if in the, in the municipal legislation, do they define? So that people will know, I suppose, who want to apply to take advantage of this? Is there going to be a more defined date so that they will know on behalf of their application?
Or really don't know.
Okay, I just was curious. When I read it, it just struck me that there's.
I know the town has already passed that last year, right? And the county has passed it. And I don't know about schools. And somehow, we had brought it up last year.
And we brought this up.
But it slipped through the cracks and then it was done. So now we're.
Just so that people will know who want to take advantage of it.
Yeah, define.
Yeah.
What was the percentage anyways? I think fifteen percent, isn't it?
Yeah. And then they give a maximum, um, the way that they do the calculation. Yeah.
It's about the same as, uh, the other exemptions. About the same.
Okay.
Okay. And motion debated. Second, any other discussion? If not, all is a favorable vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. No. Oh, lost my place. Oh. Discussion on Panhtoprol Memorial gazebo. Uh, a number of the ladies in the village don't like the looks of a gazebo. It's, uh, it needs some tender loving care. And they suggested painting it white. If they, if the village would buy the material, they would paint it. But I'm not in favor of painting it white. Because it'll always be dirty.
I don't know if you can paint it either. We put that Thompson's water seal a couple times.
No, we didn't put Thompson's. We put a color. It was a colored seal.
It's a stain though, right? It's a stain, yeah.
So does it need to be pressure washed or restained?
Well, a different, different stain. Because the stain, it's like a gray colored stain. And it sure is that bright.
What about the pretty?
I don't know.
Pretty blue in the village, that one. So that's a pretty color. But maybe that'll show because it's too light in there.
Could we try to re-stain it?
We could, but I'm not sure.
I mean, not even a good stain, color staining.
I'm not sure if I, uh, too good. I hate paintings. I don't get into it too much.
Well, due to the education committee, right?
No, no, it's just.
It's not a duty of education.
No, it was.
Those roles that take their bars.
They do their annual walk. They do their daily walk. It's not the same ones that rules. We just, and I, and I have to agree with them. It does not look good. But, uh, maybe we can authorize to have it done, but, uh, get together with some people and get some color charts and pick other color.
Yeah, I'd get the best thing right there. Try and get some decent color.
I don't think it's going to take much to.
Free it up?
Free it up, you know, as far as, uh, material.
It's free.
Maybe four, five gallons. Well, they talk.
Well, we stained that, I think it was two gallons the last time.
Say, two, three gallons. Boy, I'll tell you. When you clean it all off, pressure wash it and then stain it, you know, I bet you it's going to soak it in.
Wasn't it a good lesson?
We've worked, I washed it. That was, uh, two or three years ago.
Anyway.
So that's a, that's a good point. Just to get a bunch of options and pick one. On that same, same, well, similar subject, we might want to consider renaming that Peggy and John Memorial gazebo.
That's been brought up, and I want to leave it alone.
Did you?
Yeah, this, uh, this is sad in jest, to understand. Pat was a saint, but the other one wasn't.
There is an understanding there, right?
They're just kidding.
I said.
I know, I know.
Yeah. Yeah. That was, if God was sitting there.
That's true. We can say it when he was there.
He was sitting there, man. He was going to open me a door.
Let's study that.
All right, let's, let's authorize them that we're going to do it. But we need to sit down with some color charts, with some people and say, hey, we got a better color than white. The other thing they want to do, and they'll donate them, is those little neon lights, the little tiny lights. They want to put it right around the edge. They said they would take care of that.
So like Brian, that's one of the villages in one of that one. I think that would look pretty nice.
Maybe even buy a couple of galleries as soon as there is a donation. Oh, all's good, whatever case.
Well.
He's a giver.
So, George, who would you propose is going to make the final decision?
Well, between these people in the whole.
Okay. Okay.
You need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, second. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Second by trustee Robertson. Any discussion?
So we're making a motion to authorize the work to be done and that we'll study the.
After we have a study of what color it will be. Got that all, now Carol at it? Any other discussion, board? If not, all in favor, vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Last thing on my agenda. And you don't have it, is a bill for the Handy Toyota. The bill that we approved on that accident.
Yep.
Was only a partial bill. Uh, I, I don't know where. Carol, you got that bill?
Do you have it in your packet?
Oh.
It's the last item on your packet.
I'm just wondering why that was in there.
I don't.
That was all taken care of.
All we thought it was due.
Well, what happened was, uh, the people that, we paid the bill.
Yep.
Were the people that did the work. The parts came from Handy Toyota. So the bill spells out the parts and it comes what? To, uh, not eight nineteen, but three fifty-one.
In addition to the four forty-three?
Yep, yep.
Well, I think it's the same, like I said before. It's, I mean, I don't like to pay it. It's expensive doing business and it couldn't have been a lot worse. Every couple of years it happens.
I told, uh, this guy from Toyota, I said, we got a bill and we paid that bill. Well, they shouldn't have done it. Shouldn't have done it. Well, I, I can't tell them what to do.
You're getting one bill.
He's over here.
I told you, see, I have over here two, George.
You're getting one bill, how can you, you gotta pay it?
With labor and parts, it said.
Yeah.
But the parts, the parts were the paint.
Well, they're charging us three hundred bucks for a service call.
No, that's the other one, Dennis. That's the, that's the second one we paid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the one we paid. But then there's another one that came in.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's no way we can get around it.
No, no, no.
I think it's.
I mean, uh.
No, and the issue's been addressed. So I think there's a general understanding now what should be done next time. Hopefully, there won't be next time.
Everybody knows, everybody knows the policy, right?
Yep, everybody's.
Just like if you have an accident, you know personally, you call the police, take pictures.
Yep.
That's what I told them next morning.
Need a motion to pay that bill.
I'll make it.
I'll second it. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Second by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all is a favorable vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. That is it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, uh, one item on my agenda tonight. I'll make it as brief as I can. In two thousand twelve, under the Americans with Disabilities, we have to make some changes to the court system in Ralph's Point. Because we're up on the second floor, it's not accessible for handicapped people. So I met with, uh, Mike O'Brien, Judge LaBouny came and looked at the courtroom. And there's a grant that's going to be available, up to thirty thousand dollars for upgrades of the court system. Champlain put in for a grant and they got it. We've never put in for a grant for this, so we, I mean, I'm not saying a hundred percent we can do. But what we'd like to do is take Tony's office and move it into the warm room. So her office would be on the first floor. Then in the courtroom here, we would like to change this door, put a knining over the outside of the door and bring the prisoners in and out through this door to keep them away from the, uh, Tuesday night is the hockey league. Uh, we'd like to put a new outside light outside the, this door. Change the door on the other end. Three file cabinets. Facility so that we bring a prisoner in and they have to be handcuffed. They can be handcuffed right to the floor. It's a safety issue. Uh, we need a panic button in this room, in the other room. Now, the panic button is no negotiating. We've got to have that. It's hooked up through Time Warner. Uh, they've already run a line for the credit cards so they can accept credit cards. And we could just move her office in here and hardly do any of the work. Some of that's mandated, like I said. Or I can apply for the grant and if we get the money, if we get up to thirty thousand, we could do the upgrades that we want to do. It's up to the village, uh, it's up to the board what they want to do. It's kind of a pain to do the grant applications. I've looked at all of them, stuff like that. And, uh, I mean, it can be done and I'll do it if, if you want me to do it. But George said, well, we're going to spend money in the court system and, you know, are we going to have a court system? And I can't look in a crystal ball and tell you what's going to happen a couple of years down the road. But I think that, well, the way the economy's going and everything, that we'll need the court system. And it's part of the revenue. It sounds weird, but it's just part of the money that comes into the village. So if we can get the grant, we'll do it. If we can't get the grant, well, then we'll go to plan B, which will be tent buttons and, uh, run the court the way it is.
I wouldn't run a tent for the bell problem.
Yeah, well, it'd be good except for the winter. So that's my presentation that I have. I've got all the stack of paperwork here and.
Where do they want to move Tony's office to?
Put Tony's office on the other end near the.
In the community room?
Yep. Only three hours a night, once a week.
No, no, no.
Yep.
Not three hours, one night a week. It's every day of the week that she's there.
Oh, yeah, she'll be there every day.
Yeah.
Yeah. But she works days, so I mean, the hockey and figure skating and all that doesn't start till, the high school team comes on the ice at three thirty or four.
Are they going to be into her stuff? That's, that's where I would want.
Well, that's what we're going to do. We're going to get a couple of file cabinets because they're all locked up.
They're not able to store the room?
She, she's not going to be able to have all that equipment that she has upstairs now.
Yes, you've got pilot torches.
She's got computers, Brian, and I mean.
A lot of them, I don't think are getting used, but.
Oh, she uses them. Every time I did those audits, she called everything up for me.
Our son, is there two that she uses?
Just one.
Just one, that's okay.
They're used every day. I mean, all the tickets are electronic filed and the, the tickets from the village and the state police are all electronic filed. Everything's on the computer.
I would have a concern for her being in this building by herself much of the time as well.
That's why you have a panic button.
Yeah, but if you hit the panic button, someone's got to answer that from a location other than this building as opposed to her having other people downstairs while she's there. I, I don't know. Is she comfortable with that, do you know, Brian, or?
I, I talked to her, got the application and stuff like that when we went through with the judge and stuff. I mean, there is people here in Rexha.
Not all the time, no. Not all the time.
All day long, they're out on the, summertime, all alongs. There's nobody here.
Yeah.
Well, she's upstairs and she's all by herself up there, so I mean, it's, you know.
But she has our son there much of the time. She has the girls in the front office. I mean, someone is in the same building as she is. That, you know, that, that would be my concern for even with a panic button. You know, if, if someone is, even, even if it were to bring the police station, someone still has to drive, you know, get in a vehicle and drive down the street to get here. So I don't, I'm just curious about that.
Anywhere in the village, they got, I mean, drive to come, whether it's here, upstairs or whatever.
Haven't given any thought to making that office in one of the garages that they put.
We didn't think that, that thirty thousand would even come close to it. Because like the other night, the courtroom was full. So we said, we can't go small.
I'm not talking courtroom. I'm talking Tony's office.
Tony's office. Bring her downstairs.
Oh, bring her downstairs, oh.
From where all the records are kept and stuff and make a room like that.
You can't take the record to us.
No, no, but there's still room to do it in front of that.
Yeah.
To make another room for, for her downstairs.
Well, I didn't actually go look at that because I didn't figure thirty thousand even come close. I figured you put, you just put in your door and stuff on the outside and then pay part of that or crush stone so we can bring prisoners in and out. So, but. So we got to September fifteenth.
We could put an office in there and it wouldn't, all the boxes would be gone out of sight. Make it look like an old village office.
I suppose I could go look at that tomorrow own.
I'll go with you.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, by the next meeting at the latest, we'll have to make a decision.
Are there any matching funds, Brian, that we have to come up with or is it just a straight grant?
Straight grant.
Straight grant, that's great.
I think we should definitely apply for a grant. I mean, it sounds like we're going to have to go forward something. As far as the office location, we can determine that.
We even say, our son's office has got to come down where they can be accessible. I mean, I think we can get around that. Somebody wanted to come meet our son, you could go in the mayor's office and have him come in here. I mean, I don't want to spend a bunch, a bunch of money. If we set it up and set it up right, we'll be good forever. So, yeah. Okay, so you can think on that and by the next meeting, I'll have a little bit more information. Then we can, it'll give us enough time to do paperwork.
Do you need to know though, the, what, when you fill out the grant application, Brian, do you have to put in there specifically what our plans are?
Yep. You got to take pictures.
Do you have to know? Okay.
Yep. And really, I wanted Brian to come in. He's been tied up with a bunch of stuff to give us, give us an idea of what's it's going to be. I mean, I, you know, a door and a metal door and a casing, three, four, five hundred dollars, you know, and so it doesn't take long.
Yeah. That saves everywhere to make that news. In the old building and they're getting them in there. Can they hold court right in there too?
They could, but like the other night when they had court, the place was full here. So it's better to go to, you know, I mean, it doesn't happen all the time. There was thirty-five people came for court, so it doesn't even room for thirty-five people in here. Plus, the other problem down here. The other problem down here is when they have attorneys here, they need a room where they can have a conference. So we're thinking about where Ernie's office was, clean that up and put a desk and a couple of chairs in there. And that would give us that required in the whole setting. Wouldn't cost us anything to do it. But he said, put in for five new tables, put in for the desks here. And if we get it, we get it. We don't, well, then we'll just go to scale back. Yeah, a couple of tables up front here. File cabinets. So.
File cabinets. What are you going to do with the filing cabinets that Tony's got now?
Well, we need, uh.
Only, you ever see how many she's got up there?
Yep.
And she's got two downstairs that we're using. Fireproof cabinets.
Yes.
That she got, she, you know, she had platforms and brands. We can't put in more upstairs.
No, no, I know that. No, I'm trying to get away.
They're coming through the floor. Hey, we got all the backup surf plan up there.
There you go.
We'll help them.
So that's where we're standing now. So I got all the information. So by the next meeting, we'll make a decision whether we go forward or not. And that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Roberts. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Baker. I had them checked off already because I noticed it. Trustee Roberts.
Well, my topic is very similar to Brian's topic. It's to do with the, uh, American Disabilities Act for the library. Um, we had, um, someone come in and assess it for accessibility. And you guys all have a packet. All right. So you've browsed through the packet. Um, so basically, Donna is requesting that we authorize her to apply for a grant, um, to, uh. Fix, fix, specifically the bathroom, but there's, uh, other things that need to be taken care of, like enlarging the parking lot potentially. Replacing the front doors and the side entrance. You've seen all the pictures. Patching, repair some of the, the, the cracks in the lobby and replace the carpeting. Um, what's nice about the grant for this year is it's increased to a seventy-five percent grant instead of a fifty-fifty. It's seventy-five, twenty-five, and we do the twenty-five. Um, do you have anything more you want to add, Donna?
The, um, just the, the twenty-five percent can be the incoming donation, so it can be any of the work that we do. So if we have people, some of our own people do the work, whether they do the, the enlarging the parking lot, that can count towards twenty-five percent. If they do the patching and the painting, that all counts toward the twenty-five percent. And it's the same, um, grant that I applied for for the roof. It's the construction grant and it's through the state.
Didn't we get some of the doors and windows paid for by ugly people?
I asked and.
Oh, we can't?
Question. Is that building a historic site?
It's a historic site, but it's not on the national register.
Okay, because those doors, if you had to put them back, what's there, it would cost you an arm and a leg.
It's not on the national register.
So that means you don't have to put it back original.
The doors that are on it now are not original. So that's why I have to go through, um, state historic preservation to get the okay, just like I did for the roof. And the whole packet has to go down, just basically telling what we want to do with it. And they've got the same packet with additional documentation that I've given every one of you with the pictures. Um, just asking if we can do the repairs and do the, if we want to enlarge the parking lot. They put their stamp of approval on it and then it's with for any grant that we apply for, for those repairs.
And we'll have three years to do the.
We have three years to do it. Um, and just every year I have to do a report to update. But we have three years. And the same thing with the ADA for the bathroom. That's March of two thousand and twelve. If we do not have it done by then, um, we can ask for an extension and I can incorporate that into a five-year plan, um, with ADA.
Some of these things, Donna, if we don't do them, we can get fined.
I know.
So that's the reason on the court upgrade too. Some things we just got to do.
Exactly. So I say, my topic is still similar to yours. It's, it's, you know.
That's the only thing that does not need the handicap accessibility of the library. Doors, everything else needs, the bathroom does not. And we have to have a public bathroom because we have a public eating place at the library. So we have to have a public bathroom.
I make a motion to apply for that grant. Second. Moved by trustee Baker. Second by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all is a favorable vote by your son of I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And I thank you, Donna. Yes, thanks for the work, Donna. I know you put a lot of time in it.
That's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, trustee Roberts.
Trustee Penfield. Um, the one item I have tonight is something that we all received via email and I know Carol had also printed some copies. Basically, it's a summary of what went on at the last public meeting we had when the two ladies were here from River Street. And we had the members of the planning, zoning and code review committee, um, groups here. And, um. I have looked through the changes, I read through their memorandum. Um, I know that there were a couple of questions that Jerry had, Jerry Favreau had listed at the bottom of the page. Um, only I think one of which, let's see, one, two. Two of which were actually discussed by the codes review committee and also, um. I know by the, the moratorium that we have for the downtown. Um. I think at this point, I know that Melissa's email is looking for input from us on how to proceed. And, um, I guess what I would say is. Basically, we make the couple of decisions, I don't know if everyone, does everyone have the memo in front of you? On the second page of the memo. There, the first two bullets, in my opinion, are the most important. Um, the one having to do with our moratorium on residential units on the first floor of the downtown. Making that language, um, as clear as possible. And I know that we, we have had that moratorium now for several years. So I think that that bullet, we should, you know, certainly take their suggestion so that it's as clear as it can possibly be. And then their recommendation in the second one is one that I know has been dealt with every time we've updated the zoning code, having to do with signs in the village. And I would also recommend taking their, their recommendation, um. In terms of, of the definition of internally lit signs and then adding them to the list of the prohibited items. So I think for those first two bullets, I would recommend that we take their recommendations. I know that those things have been discussed previously. The other items that are there, um. I guess my feeling is at this point. That we leave those for now. Uh, the reason being that. It seemed that that evening when people left, that all of the comments and all of the questions that they had seemed to get addressed. And I think we've had those two consultants here and we've had several public meetings and really the end of that process. And it's a process that we began, believe it or not, in October of two thousand and six. And I think in addition to the zoning and planning all those years that we have, we had over a dozen residents who served on the codes review committee. So I think on their behalf, seeing as they have attended the public meetings. I, my recommendation would be that we go ahead and finalize these changes. And get them into our, our zoning changes at this point. And then if there are additional items that Jerry or anyone may have, but the next time, you know. What I, what I'd like to see happen is that since there was so much public input that went into these changes. I'd rather not frustrate the volunteers who took the time to do that by waiting any longer. And if there are things that come up additionally later on, then we can do them in a future revision to the zoning code, which I think is probably already in the works.
Otherwise, you'll never get done.
Exactly, and we started this in October two thousand and six and we've had, like I said, we had a committee of over twelve of the village residents. In addition to the zoning and planning boards. And I think to be fair to them, they've been part of the whole public process, we've had all of this, well advertised, people have attended, they've gotten their questions answered. Rather than throw something new into the mix now. My recommendation would be that we go ahead with the proposed revisions that we were all here to ask our questions about and to discuss with the consultants and, and the three boards that were involved. And that we go ahead and make those changes.
We made, Carol, do we have to authorize into a local law?
If you want to do that at this point.
No, do we have to?
You'll have to, yes.
Yes. So basically, I think what, what their memorandum says is if we're happy with what they have put in here. Then they would finalize the language and then it would then be sent to Tom so that it can be incorporated into local law form. So I guess. That's my feeling on it, I don't know how, how everyone else feels, but I think to be fair to the people who've been part of the process. I think it's time to move on from here.
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that we ask, um, the consultants from River Street to finalize the language. And that we authorize Carol to send them to Tom Rintane to draft in the local law format.
Okay, I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? And being all the discussion, all of the favor of vote by you, sign by.
Aye.
Vote opposed, vote for Jerry.
That's it for my agenda, the only thing that I had, George, I, I've had a couple of people ask me about Pratt Street and I know that people are wondering and. I got that, okay, because I've had a couple of the residents ask me as I've been walking and just I think for the camera and the people who are interested. If we could just give them a brief update as to where we are.
Other reports.
Okay, there you go, okay.
As everybody well knows, we started last week to try and get Pratt Street underground. And we have run into roadblock, roadblock, roadblock. If nobody knows it, about four feet down in Pratt Street, solid shale. And we, um. Been told by the state, by state. Specifications. That we must put our pipes seven and a half feet down. Well, we tried that. And guess what, it's all worked. We're gonna have to have, if they force us, a lot of dynamite. Anyway, last Friday I set up a state with DOD, uh, state, set up a meeting with the state DOD in Mottertown. And we had their head person, head engineer, their head of engineering and the guy that did the blueprints. Or went over our blueprints and two or three other people. And the state is very firm. In their specifications. We, I've not wasted our time except they left a crack open. And that crack is if the resident engineer in Plasver, is he okay? Then we'll be okay by then and we can go three and a half feet, like all the rest of the pipes we've been putting in, our whole village. So, that's where it stands. Our engineers are getting the information they need so that we can go to the resident engineer. And hopefully answer all his questions. They have concerns that will upset their. Water, their san, not sanitary, but their storm sores. At three and a half feet because that's, on this end, it's a pretty good sized pipe. So it starts out small, comes up, it gets bigger as it comes down. So. We told, we thought it was two feet, but we have to actually take measurements. So that's in the process. Doug was up here today with his man and starting to put all the figures together. And we'll set up a meeting with. The engineer in Plasver and hopefully we convince them that we can go to him at three and a half feet. We even threw a carrot. They said. If they decide to build Pratt Street. And, uh, they decide to tear up the cement road that's there. And we'll be below that cement road. Now, I don't think there's anything to worry about if you're below the cement road. We have protection. If that happens, we will actually move the conduits and the electric, our expense, not theirs. That didn't help either. So, that's where we stand. Brian says they're gonna finish Church Street and all the wires pull up Church Street. And they've started doing determinations. So in a couple of weeks, that street might be done. And then they're gonna start punching and chatting. They'll do the punches. But that's it, no wire, nothing, because we don't have, we don't have the wire. Other suggestion the state had was for primaries both sides of the street. And we said no, because that will double the cost of the job. Everything that you had on this side, you're gonna have to have on this side. And, uh, we just said, it's, it's not, it's prohibited with the cost. Cost prohibitive.
I just got one of the two hundred valves and the four hundred valves are better. I just have one other thing to add to this. We had the same problem with Eddie Bayshard Drive, it's all really shale and all that.
There are no problems there.
Well.
No, you know what they did? Because it's the village street and then we didn't have to punch anything. That was all dug. Crenched, the whole thing.
But what, you didn't let me finish, so. The whole part of this. End, from here right up to the high school. Where DSO's quarry is and where the quarry is in Canada, it's all shale. So, it's, that's, that's just part of the lay of the land. You know? So.
We knew that. The state did. What do you mean?
And I got that.
When we put the waters, the sewer line on Pratt Street several years ago. That was all dug and our sewer lines laid right on shale.
We'd have to go to like a commercial bore like Darryl or somebody, right?
A bore, I don't, it would cost an hour like.
Oh, boy, I guess.
Maybe days, there'll be one more. Anyway, just hopefully we can convince Plasver.
Thank you, George.
That's where it stands. Not, not what we wanted to hear, but what we had, what we were doing. Welcome to the state of New York. Roadblock state. Anything else, anybody else wish, oh, I'm sorry, Carol. Our son?
I just want to report that I sent a letter out to our regular Iced Time customers letting them know what the new rate will be this coming season. Not that before, but after.
Did you get that memo I sent you or put in your basket today? From the Minnesota Electric? Does not. The, uh, the power authority is raising our hard door rate. Going from, I think, one cent. It's, or, one percent or whatever, it's, I don't have the paper for me, but I think it's gone from one point three to one point four. Why it's gonna go. It's in your basket, I think, so it's.
So it's one, one tenth of a cent?
Yeah, they're just, it's in the memo, our son. Anybody wish the rest aboard this time?
Yes, sir, I have one question. When we do the, uh, the makeover on the zoning and the planning board. Uh, when I read through the thing and they got the guidelines next to the actual law. Because we have the guidelines put in a different color than law, so if somebody doesn't interpret that guideline as being the law. When I read through it, it says, this is the guideline, but this is the actual law.
Yeah, but I think, John, when you see it, the law will be in the zoning code. Guidelines will be separate.
Well, if they're in two separate books, that's fine, as long as they can't be incorporated together. So if I get somebody on one of my committees and says, well, this is the law, I don't want to be involved in that.
No, I understand that.
I want to, if the two separate books would be the great thing. You could look at something in the thing and say, a zoning or something is, is the way it is. But you don't want the two in the same thing because they, because when I led that thing, they had a line drawn through it. And people are gonna interpret that as being the law versus being a guideline there.
I think that was just in the draft, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I know it's in the draft, but what I'm saying is you print it out the same way the draft is. And I don't want, you know, you get somebody on one of the zoning or one of the planning boards reads that and says, well, this is the law. That's not the law. This is the law, but this is the guideline.
Right, I understood, yep.
Eliminate the misinterpretation.
Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment. I'll make that motion for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Roberts. I can't see the hands, they're, what time is it?
Forty-one.
Twenty-two.